I have a good notice that this meeting was provided by sending such a notice to the Asbury Press, the Middletown Hatch, and the Middletown Township Public Schools District website, and the posting of such a notice at the office team writer administrative offices at each elementary, middle, and secondary school in the district. Full call.
Mrs. Caminiti?
Here.
Mr. DeFranco?
Here.
Mr. Donlin?
Here.
Mr. Dymo?
Here.
Mr. Little?
Mrs. Minuise?
Here.
Mrs. Wright?
Here.
Mrs. Stella?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it. Okay, we start the meeting tonight with the presentation of the 2018-2019 comprehensive annual financial report presented by Holman, Trina, and Allison.
We have Matt Holman here from the firm who worked with us to do the audit and get the caper done. I'm actually going--the caper's been posted on the portal. I do have hard copies here though, so I'll pass them out if you don't want to keep them at the end. We just use electronic copy. You can put them back to me if you'd like.
Thank you, Amy. Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I'd just like to thank the board for the opportunity to do the audit. And as usual, working with Amy and her staff in business office is a pleasure. This honestly, I don't get to say this very often, but this is truly one of my favorite audits. We do about seventy throughout the school district, or throughout the state, and by far, this is one of the best districts that we audit every year. And this year was no different. This is a very good audit, and so it's much easier to present the good audits. So with that, I just wanted to present a couple highlights. The first thing, a very nice award that the district has received for every year that I've been doing the audit. This is about my fifth year involved, and my third as a partner. But I did want to point out page eleven, you'll see, the district once again awarded the National ASBO Certificate of Excellence in Financial Report. There's, you know, I think there's about four districts in Monmouth County that received this award, and, you know, there's probably only thirty in the state that received this award. So it's a very prestigious award to be granted, and really, it's kind of the gold standard to ensure that the audit report that you're receiving is at the highest level and in compliance with all of the different accounting pronouns that need to be followed. Outside of that, you'll see page fifteen, we present our independent auditor's opinion, and I'm happy to announce that this is an unmodified opinion. We did not have to modify the standard auditor's opinion for any issues that were noted during our audit. That is the best opinion that can be rendered for this district. Page one ninety. Oh, question on that? Sure.
The ASBO award, is that for year ending 2018?
Correct. So what happens is, I'll just give you a little bit of more background on that. The audit report is actually sent after it's finalized down to Georgia where there's a team that actually will review the audit to ensure that it is in compliance with all CASB rules and regulations that it needs to comply with. So it takes time for that award to come back, and it's usually received by the district, I would say, July, August, depending on when it's been issued. So we're always kind of a year behind with that. So as I was saying, page one ninety-nine is another report that we give to the district, and this is your report on the internal control. And again, I'm happy to announce that this is an unmodified report. We did not need to put any modifications in or any findings related to internal control problems that we found within the audit of the district. Again, this is the best opinion that can be rendered, and we did not have any issues to report in this matter. Okay. And then on page two eleven, I will also point out here, this is our opportunity to put in any findings and recommendations that we had for the district going forward. And again, I'm happy to announce that we had nothing that we felt needed to be raised to the level of being an audit report. So we had, that's where you would see findings, but we did have them there. But overall, as I began the presentation, a very clean audit, certainly one of the best districts that we did throughout the state. And again, it's been an absolute pleasure to work with the business office, and again, thank you for the opportunity to do the audit. Is there any questions and further details?
The ten-year fund balance projections, what pages is, what page is that on?
The look, the look back of the fund balance?
Yes, the back, ten-year look back of the fund balance.
You can actually see that if you go to, really probably the best spot would be... If you look at your page one sixty-seven, it's actually the J2 exhibit. You will get a ten-year look back of your fund balances there. And then I would also point you to page one sixty-eight. Keep in mind, page one sixty-seven is your government-wide fund balance presentation, page one sixty-eight being your fund, uh, fund basis fund balance presentation. I would probably say that one sixty-eight is more your day-to-day presentation, probably a little more valuable. Any other questions? All right. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night and happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, Matt, and I also would just like to publicly thank everyone in our business office who helps with the audit, everybody's recorders and things for the auditors to look at and test and so forth, and so it's really, and they have done their part to get the auditor's opinion. So I just want to publicly thank all of them as well. And you will be willing to accept this audit under supervision.
Okay, moving on to our committee reports. We'll start with technology, Dave Suiak.
Good evening. I have two items on for tonight's workshop. The first item is our district phishing campaign. Over the past few years, we've taken some, some measures to harden our network security, that we implemented a new firewall, set up advanced data protection software, and enable new endpoint detection tools, all for the purpose of trying to prevent viruses, malware, and spyware from anywhere in our network. One area where we would need a improvement was social engineering. Social engineering is basically the act of a bad guy trying to trick someone into doing something that they normally don't do, provide access to your network. So in order to better protect our resources and defer the edge of our staff, we ran a phishing campaign on the NoStem last month. Basically, we sent out a phishing email with the intention of trying to see how many people fell for the phishing email. A simulated phishing attack was able to generate a baseline vulnerability number for us. I'm happy to say that our baseline vulnerability number is less than the industry's standard in education. The standard is twenty-four percent. We were eleven-point-eight, but when it's not great, it was better than twenty-four. So following the baseline campaign, email sent out to all staff explaining the email itself, the reasoning behind doing so, as well as links to additional information on how to detect campaigns in the future and how to prevent an intrusion from happening. Moving forward, we're going to continue to do simulated phishing campaigns. We're going to randomize them. We're going to change the topics, and our goal is to try to get that eleven-point-eight down to zero-point-seven, zero percent vulnerability. Second I have tonight is Comcast internet router upgrade. This past month, we worked with Comcast, which is one of our two network providers, and we replaced one of our routers that provides access to our schools. The existing router was Reach End of Life, and it was the one we supported. So after hours, at downtime, we swapped it out with a new router. Just to give you information, the new router itself allows us now a pure fiber optical connection from endpoint to endpoint. So it's much more advanced. It allows for future growth much more easier. It also provides Comcast with more advanced tools so they can monitor our network, and then they can try to detect issues before they arise to cause network downtime. There was no fault to the router. It's part of our contract with them, so. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to student services.
Hi, everyone. We had a student services committee meeting on December sixteenth, which actually was also the date that we met with the representatives from the CPAC, and at both meetings, we discussed the district's understanding screening tool and interventions for dyslexia. We discussed the Middletown Township Friends of Diverse Learners screening of the film Intelligent Lives, which will be a collaborative effort between the group and the district, and held in the auditorium of High School South on January fourteenth. It is a great documentary about students with disabilities who become young adults and how they proceed in close secondary life, and file will be distributed to encourage all to attend. We also discussed a screening of the film My Beautiful Stutter, which one of our speech therapists has taken the lead on, and we are planning it for late April or early May. And again, we'll do so in conjunction with the CPAC/Middletown Township Friends of Diverse Learners. We discussed the Slam Dunk for Autism, which is a fundraiser that will take place on January twenty-fifth. Again, a file will be forthcoming. We also discussed least restrictive environment, which again is one of our focuses. I met with the child study team, with the other special education directors in small groups, so that we could go over a number of different things, including least restrictive environment, communication with parents at IEP meetings, and making sure that we are doing the best for our students in the least restrictive environment. So that's our student services committee. On the voting end, you will be voting on a number of students receiving home instruction, out-of-district placements, both new and continuing, and contracted services. Does anybody have any questions about either the voting items or the student services committee meeting?
Is the Ocean Avenue class on the road?
Yes, I'm sorry. The preschool class. So we will need a new preschool class. We'll need an additional preschool class. We have a lot of young students coming to us. We did discuss Ocean Avenue as a possible location at our student services committee meeting. We're looking at our other buildings also to make sure that we have appropriate bathroom facilities for the students. So that will be discussed again in January. We'll need to have the class on and running by February next.
And the January fifteenth meeting for Friends of Diverse Learners, I thought you had mentioned that that might be postponed?
Yes, so I did receive an email today. We had talked about January fourteenth. Initially, is the date for the screening of Intelligent Lives, but due to a number of events taking place, the two administrators of the Friends of Diverse Learners wanted a little time to think about it, but they did email and say what they would like to move forward with January fourteenth at the High School South auditorium for the screening. It really is a great, great film, and we're hoping to have a good turnout for that.
You mentioned dyslexia. I had left the CPAC meeting a little early. What did you speak about? Is there anything that you'll be modifying, maybe for children with dyslexia? Any news?
So Angela Merrill was there, and she is the supervisor of elementary curriculum, and she went over the screening tools that are implemented by the district for all of our incoming kindergarten students, and she went over the additional assessments that are used if a student shows that they may be at risk for dyslexia. On the special education side, we talked about the different assessments that are used to target dyslexia. We talked about the child study teams kind of becoming more comfortable with the use of the word dyslexia. We did clarify that it is not one of the categories on which a student would be classified, but we do want to acknowledge it and make sure that we're discussing it fully at any IEP meetings.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Wright, did you want to add anything? I don't know.
Not necessarily to add, but I know I'm speaking with Mrs. Milton and Dr. Tafford after arguing on Monday. They were really appreciative of all the time that you spent with us in actually answering all those questions on the screenings, and I think we're probably going to be coming back to you soon to have a follow-up meeting, because we didn't get to completely finish. But, you know, I appreciate everything that you were able to tell us on Monday, and also you were continuing to talk with the child study teams to really sort of just make that process a little bit more smoother for the parents. I know that's greatly appreciated.
Okay, great. It really is my pleasure.
Thank you.
Great. Curriculum instruction.
So we had a very lengthy curriculum committee meeting on November twenty-fifth, and I know Mrs. Stella took obvious notes.
I did.
And we updated those to the board portal today. Was there anything more that you wanted to add, Mrs. Stella, other than what was already in the notes? I don't know.
Um, does anyone have any questions? Do you want me to give a brief report out?
I don't know. It's, uh...
Do you want me to do a summary? Do you want me to do a quick summary? I'll try to get it all in. Feel free to pop in if I missed anything, or if you need to add more detail.
Okay, so we met on November twenty-fifth. The first thing we discussed was the expanded access to AP classes. It's working well, a smooth transition. There were one thousand three hundred and thirty-nine total tests registered, which is a sixty-two percent increase, which is fantastic. There was also a survey developed by the curriculum supervisors and directors, and given to AP teachers to distribute to their students. Four hundred and forty-five students completed it, and the data showed that only a small percentage attended the summer jump start program in the office hours, so they're looking into that right now. And they're also considering a spring tutorial instead to prep kids for the May test. And we're also considering offering the PSAT to eighth and ninth graders on a voluntary basis.
And that's actually going to be, it was communicated to parents. It's going to be offered in March, two different Saturdays. We already have students responding and parents responding to sign up.
Great. They are looking at the requirements for honor roll versus high honor roll, and for the high school level, they're keeping it as-is, and they're considering changing it, changing the middle school criteria, because right now at the middle school level, we have more students in high honor roll than in honor roll, which isn't the usual. There's a state program now where students can take a test for the SEAL of Bilingual literacy. This is for high school students, and seniors just took it recently. It's twenty dollars for all languages except for ten dollars for Latin, maybe because it's a dead language, I don't know. And if the students pass, it will certify them as bilingual, and a seal goes on their transcripts. And juniors will be taking it in the spring. There was an arts academy update, year one of the dance track. It's a very smooth transition so far. This is year two of all the other tracks. Tracks, students sign contracts requiring community service, particularly within the arts. The rollout of responsive classroom for elementary schools. There was a lot of professional development on the morning meeting. Fifty teachers are now Level One certified, and at least two per building, and one Level Two certified teacher is in each building also. High school readers and writers workshop. Teachers in ninth and tenth grade now have classroom libraries that are launched into Destiny, which is the library software system. This makes it a lot easier to track books, so books aren't lost or misplaced, which happens a lot. Readers and writers workshop is going very well at the high school level, and especially since kids are coming in from the middle school, used to this system and are very well prepared. Book clubs are continuing to happen. We had an update on big ideas math and all the online features for kids. There's a lot of drag and drop. There's an exploration, which is usually a video for each lesson, and it shows the practical application of certain math skills, which I definitely could have used when I was young. They are now rolling it out to high schools for ninth graders, and teachers were trained on it at the end of this past school year in June. Proximately learning. We're looking into learning, we're looking into some elective courses, for example, like American Sign Language at the elementary level, and maybe even the high school level to grow the course offerings and languages offered. Paraprofessional, professional development. There are sixteen hours required. There's now a welcome PD program, and there'll be another one in December, and many of the paraprofessionals are taking part in the Rutgers project, and they can take webinars and even get paid and earn PD hours.
And I just want to also reiterate that at the beginning of the school year, our paraprofessionals participated in the first two staff-only report days prior to students starting, and many of them over those two days accumulated approximately nine out of their sixteen hours at the very front end of the school year, receiving a lot of professional development and training. And the welcome PD meeting occurs on a monthly basis. It was just, the next one was going to be December at that point, and that's for any new hire. So within about a month to six weeks of being recruited into the district, they attend a paraprofessional training.
And we discussed how we're communicating DRA, FNP, ICANN, and On Demand writing scores to parents, because people have asked. We have a program called Linkit, which is a large data warehouse that teachers and administrators have had access to, but now, I don't know if it happened already or they're in the process, there will be a parent portal, so parents can log on soon and be able to find out how their students have done on standardized tests and DRAs.
And we're in the process right now of meeting with teachers and administrators and working with Linkit to set up user access. We have to create almost ten, you know, about eight thousand accounts, and login credentials, and in short, you know, we're just moving off of pilot implementation of Linkit, grades two through twelve. So we have to make sure that in moving to a full implementation, the data is in there correctly, and what the parents are seeing is accurate. So we're kind of doing like a audit of the data to make sure that it's accurate for these students.
And finally, ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act. The 2018 slash nineteen Accountability in School Profile Reports, which includes standardized assessment data, is currently embargoed, but will be released to the public at a date to be determined by the New Jersey Department of Education. And that's it. It was a great meeting. It's so nice to hear from all the directors and supervisors about the great programs and curricula that's offered to our students. So, did anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Sure.
I want to give my perspective from the meeting.
Okay.
The academies, it's really something that's bothering, because we only have, say, nine kids in one academy. We have a program going on, ignore it, that the South kids are not signing up for. We have a program going on at South where the North kids are not signing up for. That was the whole idea of having these academies and offering the classes. So if they're not willing to switch schools, which is their priority, they might want to stay with their friends, I think we have to start looking at this as a budget, you know, budget-related, because it doesn't mean that because they're not, they don't want to switch schools, they shouldn't be able to take those programs. So if they're not going to switch schools to those academies, then maybe we need to start looking at how we're going to provide those classes in each high school.
Okay, from a budget standpoint, we're using staff that we already have. So we haven't hired any new people, so I believe it's maybe forty thousand dollars.
Forty thousand dollars total.
Well, it's, I get a mixed, a mixed perspective on that one, because one person tells me it doesn't cost that much, and you said at that meeting that it was kind of expensive, so...
I don't remember saying it, but...
But either way, it's not working. The whole idea of getting the kids to take these courses and switch in school and having an academy, it, the numbers are there, it's not working.
Respectfully, I just want to comment on that it's not working. We have seen a significant increase in the number of students that are originally zoned to attend High School South from the first year of implementation of, say, for example, the Arts Academy, to the number of students who are participating this year. If you recall, the first year we had one student who was originally zoned for South, participated and was accepted into the Arts Academy. This year, that number has significantly increased.
We were told maybe five or six.
That was students who were currently ninth graders at South last year, who then entered as sophorites. But the number of incoming ninth graders who, from the eighth grade, from the middle school, we have quite a few.
Well, that will be led to tell. Every year, we're told we have quite a few, and come September, these kids are deciding not to do it. So this September will be another... That is accurate, because we've discussed that many times. Each time, and I'm even hearing now that some of the kids are dropping out halfway through the year, because, you know, it's...
That's not my understanding, that there's students dropping out of the Arts Academy.
That's not my understanding either. I know some students personally, some of my ex-students who love the program.
There's nine kids in the program, and I know in the whole Arts Academy.
In the dance program.
Oh. In the dance program.
I don't have the numbers of the dance. Oh, in the dance program, in year one.
I know in the music, there's more. I understand that. I'm talking about looking at the parts that are not getting the participation, because maybe there's another track that will attract more students to enjoy the game.
In addition, in step dance.
And then we need to find out where we can send the kids where it's on low participation to get that kind of experience that they need. I think we have to review it.
Okay.
You know, and I, and I...
Yeah, I think it's a new one, but it takes time to catch on, but we can talk about this more in new business. We can move on to the next thing.
Well, it's under curriculum. It was under the curriculum.
Right, but this is the, this is the report right now, so if we could readdress this in...
It's our workshop. This is our workshop.
No, if you have more to add, we'll go.
No, we only have one meeting a month, and this is our workshop. We can't talk about things under the committees?
Do you have anything else?
No, 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 you can't.
No, that's it. We have had it.
Just to be clear, there was no indication that you couldn't talk about it. The suggestion was that it be under new business. There was a report committee. It sounded like it was a blank meeting, as indicated, the committee chair gave the report out. Some of your comments and recommendations were more so for new prospective initiatives from a budgetary standpoint and a curriculum standpoint, which is why...
I request these same, these same recommendations in the curriculum committee meeting.
Okay, so all, I think the president was saying that you don't have to have another curriculum committee meeting now, and that since your recommendations were prospective from a budget standpoint, perhaps it would work under new business. That's all.
I just feel that we're going from two meetings to one, and then there's no conversation. I won't say anymore about it.
No, I understand why you wouldn't say, but you can feel free to disagree, but our legal counsel just told you that we can talk about it in new business, and what I heard...
It's under this.
But the point is that under the usual rules, you're proposing doing a review of the enrollment of that, let me finish, don't cut me off. Doing a review of the enrollment in the Arts Academies, you asserted some numbers that were disagreed with by the administration and by board, and at this point, it sounds like if we're going to take action on any of that to follow through on your review, which I agree, a review is not a bad idea, we would propose it in new business. No one's telling you that you can't talk about something, and to say in public that you're being told that you can't talk about something is untrue. So I don't think it's becoming of a board member to complain that you're not being heard, when in fact, they said, we want to hear you, we want to take action on this, and it'll happen in new business.
As I started out in my conversation, I was giving my perspective.
Right, and you're...
I didn't ask you to take action. I gave my perspective on what I feel should be done.
And so if that's your perspective, and the consensus of the board is that that's a good perspective, that we should take action on it, I don't see what a better outcome would be. What is there to complain about?
Nick, this is a workshop. We should be able to talk about these things under these committees.
Again, nobody said that you couldn't talk about it.
We shouldn't have to wait until new business.
Will you forget by new business?
Okay, but I shouldn't have to talk about new business. We're talking about curriculum right now.
Okay, let's move on. I don't think the public wants to hear all of this.
The way the vision is...
Let's move forward. I want to say... I want to say something. Respondent classrooms, the morning meeting, my son, who's in fifth grade, at dinner one day, taught my mom and my family how to do the whole morning meeting thing. And it's, you know, "Good morning, Lester." And he's like, "Good morning, Pam, good morning, Nick, good morning." It's adorable and it's just a really nice way to start their day. I'm really happy that we're doing that. He says it puts him in a good mood and I think all the kids in the class feel the same. So I just wanted to say thank you for using responsive classrooms and classrooms, I think it's really successful.
And it's good to hear that the intended outcome, which is to grow interpersonal skills and communication skills, is back to 91.
And he's not the type of kid who's going to talk to every single kid. So this is, you know, he's growing. He's learning to talk to everyone, not just his school group, Nick group, so, yeah. Anybody else?
Regarding voting agenda items, the affiliation agreement between the district and Rowan University is for student field placement, for student teaching junior practicum observation type placements, and then there's professional development and field trip, overnight field trip and a new field trip estimation.
I have a question on professional development. On the agenda, the TEXPO, what is that and are we presenting it that or are we getting feedback on that?
TEXPO is an annual event. It's a technology curriculum instruction event. My understanding is that that is professional development. They do all the chapters like this in the board's commission.
But we're not presenting at it?
I'm not, I'm not involved in any presentations.
Any of the people on here, are they presenting?
Not to my knowledge. I will, I will acquire.
Are there any other ones that people are presenting and not doing professional development?
Well, I just want to say I'm attending TEXPO and I'm, I'm attending professional development. Presenting and, and attending go hand in hand and there's not a, a better way to get the deeper understanding and deeper learning. We do encourage our teachers and our administrators to present and also to, to attend. So, I mean, at being actively involved is the best way to, to get the deeper learning and deeper understanding. So I hope that some of our people are, I know I'm not and you're not, but we're, we're going to be, we're going to be attending.
So, so the answer is you don't know if any of these people are presenting?
Oh, no. The answer is we encourage them to and I hope that they are. But it, it would not in any way preclude them from attending, learning. It actually would just get to a deeper...
I'm just asking, I'm just asking the question, are they presenting?
And we said that, well, I, I just, I just wanted to clarify that presenting and attending, when it comes to professional development, goes hand in hand and helps to get the deeper understanding and deeper learning.
I get that, I get that. I actually, that's a specific question.
Okay. We'll be at a...
But you don't know yet.
Okay, before you go, I have a question. I want to know, on the field trips, we have writing bodies, which I understand writing might be only there. Why are they open to Addison Park?
Addison Park.
I'll get back to you, I'll look it up.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I want to know. I want to know, it was weeks ago that they asked what happened. But are the, what, is this the field trip for our students?
Field trips are for students, yes.
Right, right, that's what I, okay. Just curious.
Give us a few minutes, Ms. Brooks, so we'll look it up.
Okay, go on, I need you to jump in and tell me later. Thank you.
Sounds good. Moving on to facilities and finance.
The 9/11 Memorial Gala Volunteer Program is in Tallahassee this year. Dr. Cartier requested that it be able to be on this.
Thank you. Hang on. Thank you. Facilities finance.
So our committee met on December 5th and we covered several topics. The report on this is in the board portal, but just to summarize, we have round and round our insurance brokers attend the meeting to provide the health insurance update on the, on our claims experience and also on some different avenues we're looking at, you know, in the interest of looking forward to next year's renewal and what impact that would have on our budget and, you know, some alternatives for us. So we'll be able to get information on that and find new numbers as the year progresses. Also, we talked about the facilities capital budget for 2020, 2021 and went over some of the items that we are looking at for inclusion in that budget. At the time when we had the meeting, we were looking forward to meeting with the principals and getting more input from them on their buildings. We have since had those meetings with the principals and have received feedback from them on things that they were looking to accomplish with the physical buildings that they manage. We are also, we were in the process of getting budget estimates for the replacements. One of the larger projects that we were looking to try to do was replacement of the windows here at North, which they're old. The windows in the front are older than the windows in the back, but, you know, they're, they're all between, you know, 25 and 40 years old. So they are, they've reached their lifespan. Unfortunately, after checking with all architect firms that we work with, getting preliminary estimates on that, put the price tag on that project to, you know, close to $3 million. So that is not something that we would be able to include in next year's budget, but it is something that will definitely go in our long range facilities plan as we update it and something that we would be looking to accomplish in the future. So right now, for next year's budget, we have approximately 1.4 million available in our capital reserve and that can be used to fund smaller projects, but obviously will not be enough to tackle any large scale project, you know, here in the district. But we're hoping that we can utilize those funds to do some of the smaller things that we need to be done throughout the district. We also discussed briefly just the reorganization of the business office and the facility supervisors. We did have retirement in the business office, so we are absorbing those duties into other positions and we're also rearranging the duties of the facility supervisors to get more effective management of the workforce that we have and also to address some of the issues that, you know, we had talked about that needed to be addressed, you know, in looking at the review of the department. We also talked about the status of the current budget, our 1920 budget, and as of this time, we've not identified any issues that would be areas of concern for the budget. And we, you know, the budget is running right now according to plan, which is good. We've been monitoring the impact of the ESIP, the Energy Savings Improvement Plan that we recently completed. This would be the first full year that we would have those measures in place. The solar, the LED lighting and some of the other measures that we put in place. And we did report that the district has spent approximately $300,000 less in electricity as of the end of November of this year compared to the previous year. So, you know, we felt that that was positive. We also talked about some of the legislative updates in school finance, specifically the discussion about the proposal to perhaps allow districts to exceed the 2% tax levy cap if they, in law state aid, but with the caveat that the discussion that we have seen and I think it has moved further along at this point, would be for districts who were , would stay considered to be spending under adequacy, so that would not apply to Middletown, but it is something that we're watching. There was also some discussion about changes in the state employee health benefits plan. We do not participate in that, but, you know, we monitor all areas of health benefits and there's been discussion about possibly revising the platform, the plan platforms of that plan and changing the employee contribution amounts, which again, we don't participate in that plan, so it wouldn't have a direct impact on this, but there may be a requirement for even districts who have private insurance to mirror some of the plan platforms that they would want offered in the state plan, so we're keeping an eye on that as well. As far as interest rates goes, we had good news and bad news in that department. TD Bank, which is our bank, notified, they said that they reduced our interest rate on our, in our deposit, deposited funds, again, down to 0.95%. It is the third time since July 1st that we've had an adjustment because of the reductions in the federal funds rate. So since July 1st, our interest rate has decreased from 1.35 to 0.95. So, you know, we did, you know, that is obviously not a good thing, less interest, but on the plus side of that, we talked about the fact that we have been talking to our financial advisor about the opportunity that we are going to have next year to refund our 2010 bonds. So those bonds have been refunded once already and basically what a refunding does is it allows us to recall the bonds and issue new bonds in their place, but at a lower interest rate. So our financial advisor has advised us that running the numbers, it looks like that we are in a position to again refund those 2010 bonds next year because we would have been, you know, waited the 10 years to build. And there is potential savings of, you know, the initial calculations would be approximately $400,000 per year on our debt service going forward through the maturity of these bonds, which would be in 2029. So that would be several million dollars over the course of the remaining maturity of those bonds. So the first step in that process would be that we would have to pass a required resolution in January to authorize the transaction and move forward. So we are in the process of getting more information on that and keeping, and we wouldn't actually be able to do the bond sale until a little bit later in 2020 and the call date, I believe, is August 1st. So, but it does take some lead time to do a transaction like this, so we, we felt that that was positive. Now, just to explain what that would mean for budget purposes, the debt service fund is separate from our operating budget, so it isn't something that would immediately flow into our operating budget as savings. However, it is a component of the overall tax rate for, for the district on the municipality. So while, you know, we would perhaps have an increase in the tax levy because of our situation with the operating budget, a decrease in the debt service tax levy would work to offset some of that. So we would have to take a look at that, but that is positive for the budget.
And when, when we refund, if when we refund those bonds, does that impact the maturity date?
No, the maturity date will remain at 2029.
Thanks.
Right, no, we would not extend that, we would not want to extend that because, of course, you'd want to get those paid off. Then we also talked about the before and after care RFP. We did post a, the document, I'm sorry, my notes got scratched a little. The document, a document on the portal today that we have drafted. Our plan is to release that right after the 1st of the year, that we felt it was not really useful to release it now before the holidays. So we would like to release it right after the 1st of the year, with an anticipated due date back to the district of January 31st, which would then allow the board to review everything and go through the process in February and potentially make a decision on a contract for next year at the February meeting. So that's where we stand with that. Strategic planning, financial information, we did go over the information with the committee that we were going to be looking to include in the strategic planning form, which took place last week, so you have all seen that since that meeting. And that is all we covered. So again, those loads on the portal and also Brandon Grant's presentation that went through details of the insurance information is also on the portal for your review as well. We have a couple of voting agenda items under finance, actually only one is under finance. The other two are under, other two are in the agenda, but they're finance related. We have our monthly financial reports, which are under the report of the Business Administrative Board Secretary. We have the CAFR, the comprehensive annual financial report, which was presented earlier under the report of the superintendent. And we have an authorization for disposal of some surplus property. In particular, it's some equipment that was found to be, you know, past its useful life at, it was high school South classroom. So that is on the agenda for disposal. And that is all we have with facilities and finance. Oh, and I'm sorry, the waiver that's on the addendum, that was relating to the potential of moving a, you know, opening up the new preschool classroom, moving some other classes around. So we do have the waiver on the addendum for a classroom at Dumont that we may be using for kindergarten, but has not been decided yet with any anticipation of making that an option. We need to apply for a waiver because it does not have a bathroom in the classroom. We did this in the summer for other classrooms around the districts that are used for kindergarten where the bathrooms are adjacent and not in the classroom. So that is on the addendum under facilities and after the board approves, it goes to the county superintendent to. And that's it.
Amy, when you were talking about the ESIP, how much less did we spend on energy this year? What was that number you threw out there?
Well, we, just for electricity, we were looking at through November 30th, it was around $300,000.
$300, okay.
Right. Now, just keep in mind that we, we are supposed to be realizing these savings and the savings are meant to offset, you know, the cost of, you know, we had a lease that we issued with the ESIP to pay for the improvements, not only the energy saving measures, but we also had some measures that weren't energy saving, but that needed to be done in the district, such as improvements to the HVAC systems. Some of them save energy, some of them are just to replace old equipment, which, you know, would probably save some energy too. And then also we did ceiling replacements in six of the elementary schools, which again, wouldn't save energy, but was really something that the buildings needed. So we were able to fund all that through this and, you know, make, make a point of movement.
Okay. Thank you. Amy, were we able to get any information on the bus waivers?
Oh, that's right. So we did start getting that information together. It's a lot of information to analyze, but we did pull from the high schools, the lists of these students who currently have parking permits and we have started to compare that to what we have to do with those lists. And there's, you know, hundreds of students in each school is, in order to figure out what the impact on the buses would be, we actually have to go and see what buses those students are assigned to and see, you know, what, what buses they come off of. But, you know, initially just looking at it and I'll just, you know, reiterate what we talked about last meeting, you know, even if you take a bus where we have, I mean, a bus is 54 passenger, but if we, if we're assigning 60-plus students to it anyway because we know they don't all ride, you know, if you take a few students off of the bus where you've already assigned maybe 63, 64 students, you're not going to necessarily be able to collapse a route. In addition, you know, if, even if theoretically you could collapse a route, if you make the high school routes then too long, it will then impact the tiers of the other, of the, you know, the middle school and the elementary schools and that would again affect, affect the ability of contractors to be able to tier those routes and make those routes more expensive. If they have a bus that they can't use multiple times during the morning or the afternoon, they charge you more for it. So we're looking at all these things, but it is taking a little time to go through and kind of figure out how many kids will come off of each bus.
I was just curious if we were able, if you looked into anything about, would it be an option for us to give a waiver? If there was anything legal stopping us from doing that?
Well, there, there is a provision that you can do the waiver, but what we've talked about is, you know, what would then be your, how could you, you know, how could you maybe enforce that, you know, for a whole year? If you give away, if somebody signs away, in theory, their right to ride the bus at the beginning of the year, if their situation changes in November, we have to bus them because they have to go to school. So, you know, there's been a lot of discussions throughout the education community, really, how, how good is that? And I don't know of any districts that are really actively doing that, but maybe some that know, but nobody that I've talked to has...
I just wanted to make sure that you're doing all that work. Was there anything that would prohibit us?
There's nothing that would prohibit it, but the, the whole crux of the issue is how forcible is it and how much is it really going to impact? Again, if we're already overloading the buses, knowing that students don't ride, you really can't, you know, if we're taking it from 64 now to 61 or 60, you're not eliminating the bus, so we're looking at it.
And that's something that people need to, need to know because, you know, it goes to them, you know, like it won't be easy for us.
And it might change every year. I mean, you know, you might have students, you know, that might be grouped them on area and it may impact one bus one year, but then the next year you have a different set of students that live in different places. That's something else we have to keep in mind. But we're looking at it. We'll have more information.
How many hours have you spent on this so far?
Well, I've spent some, but I've had our transportation department, you know, going through things, still I don't know exactly how much time we've spent.
16, 8, 24, 40?
You know, maybe a day or so. We have, we have more to do.
And how much, I know that this... And how much, I know that Mrs. Benny spends a lot of time mapping out the busters. If we were to change them, what's the overhead cost of that?
Well, we can't, we can't change them this year.
I know, but we're going for it because like you said, it changes.
You know, we do look at the routes every year. I mean, we try not to make significant changes when we don't have to because kids may just ride in the same routes. But we do go through all the routes every year, you know, to try to gain efficiencies and so forth. So it is something we do review and, you know, but.
I was curious about the insurance, right? We're paying insurance for these kids to ride the bus if they're not riding the bus that we're paying to ensure kids were not riding the bus.
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
I thought we discussed insurance for the kids who ride the bus. Do you pay insurance for that?
No, the contractors carry insurance. Well, they, well, they, they have to have insurance, you know, to meet the bid specs, but it doesn't, it's not really a factor of how many students are riding the bus. It's really a factor of what the liability limits are that we set.
Okay. So the district doesn't pay for insurance?
Not for, no.
Okay. All right, I understand. Thank you.
And I guess I'll just, should I go move on to policy? Does anybody have? We just have two first readings on the agenda for policies that we are revising. Actually, I'm sorry, it's one regulation, one policy. So the regulation is on the grading system, the policy is on high school grading. So those are first readings.
Is it a track changes version of the, of the regulation on grading system? Does this look like a clean copy?
Let us change it?
Mrs. Caruso can tell you to change it. I don't have it with us.
It's fine, it's changed with me. I'll be in for a stronger. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
We have a new procedure putting in place for students dropping, if they choose to drop an AP course, steps they must follow. And that, that should be in that policy because there are any steps to follow. The course was already in there, so it had to be, it wasn't a major change other than that. Okay? The other one is the regulation. Well, we jumped to that while we're at it. You don't have to dig through to find the difference. The big difference in the other one is the fact that now that we have flex schedule for seniors from the high school, the minimum number of credits for graduation may not, for some students, be one forty, it might be less. So therefore, we have to change that information as well. So it's appropriate.
Okay. Moving on to student activities.
All right, we only have one item right. Our kindergarten registration for next year is opening up on January sixth. And on the 21st, at seven o'clock here at High School North, we're going to have a district-wide parent meeting for any incoming kindergarten parents at that meeting. So we're going to spread the word. We have a lot of advertising that's going out for the kindergarten registration because we understand that people that are registering, your kids may not be in the district yet. So we're advertising to the Middletown Library on their website, on their update, the Middletown Township website and their weekly update. We're in the exit park, we're in the patch, we're in the pit lane. If you have any neighbors, let them know. I want everybody to register early.
What time is that meeting again?
Seven o'clock, January 21st, at High School North.
Thank you. Moving on to our shared services meeting. Our last shared services meeting, we discussed the project at Normandy Park. At the last township committee meeting, they passed the bonding ordinance for five point one million dollars. They're securing the financing for the project at Normandy Park. There are bid specs in the works. The schedule is that it should be built in September, but the school side of the work will be done during the summer, of course. And it's Nut Swamp and Normandy, that's all turf. They're going to be adding parking. The roller hockey rick is going to get some updates as well. We also spoke about the availability of our gyms for outside use. There's not enough room at Tanya Keller for all of the indoor sports. So the township was getting some calls from different organizations that they wanted to use our gyms. So we were told to, I think Mrs. Gallagher told us, to reach out to, to Mary Misselli. That's who you reach out to. So if you want to hold an indoor sport, reach out to Mary Misselli to see if there are any room at any of our schools for that.
Right, I just want to add that we, and we also, we did also discuss that we, one of the issues is, is our gym space is all being used. Our, our space is in high, we permit space in two high schools, the middle schools and even at New Momma because they have a larger APR than the other elementary schools. And we, you know, fortunately, we just can't satisfy all of the demand during the week for all the groups that ask. We tried to balance that as best we can, but, you know, sometimes there is a group that's looking for more. We have since that meeting spoken to one particular group that was looking for more space and made the compensation for them to increase their space. So I just wanted to add that to it.
Oh, great. Okay. Goodness. The third thing we talked about was the parking at Normandy. We reached out to Principal Patrick to tell him that as of February first, there will be no parking allowed, no student parking at Normandy and Tyndale. And the district has agreed to put a sign up that says no, no student parking so that the children are allowed, are aware not to park there.
They're actually going to start ticketing after February first. They're not supposed to really be parking there now. I mean, they did, they said temporarily they're not enforcing as much as they, they're going to, but they are going to actually start ticketing, they're saying. So that, that's, they just want everybody to know that.
Ms. Rogers, do you say that the school is going to put up the signs at Normandy Park?
The district. I'm sorry, not the township. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. The township is going to put up two signs, yes, at Normandy and Tyndale. Thank you.
We do have enough parking at South now, right? Because I know we have extra parking at North. We don't buy empty spots.
It's the juniors, it's the seventeen-year-old juniors.
Mr. Kirkpatrick feels that some of those students who end up parking at these off-site parking lots are students who don't get permits for various reasons. It may not be that there is a spot, but maybe they weren't eligible for a permit, something along those lines, and they want to bring their car to the school. So that there's some of that that's a factor.
That are near, some parents of some juniors who have, that has to do with, it's true.
Yeah. It is true.
Yeah, it used to be that, you know, parking was just a senior privilege, but being that some spaces opened up, some of the juniors were getting to park. There's obviously not enough space for every junior to have a parking spot.
Yeah, but is, but is that true? Juniors were getting a spot? Don't they go into a lottery?
It depends on the number of spots.
So let's say there isn't enough spots. Do you still have the lottery anyway?
I know, I know. It's always first pump, first, first pump.
I think, wasn't it when we added the spaces at South, for this current class, they have enough spaces for all the seniors who are eligible for the privilege. Prospectively, we don't believe they'll have enough space for the next two classes.
Well, yeah, I think it's primarily, the next class, I think, is a little bigger, but the sophomore class is, is big.
And, yeah, and I don't think juniors, I think you're right, I don't think juniors have ever had the privilege. So that's, I mean, the parents that I've heard from are junior class parents whose kids are parking at Normandy.
So, so we're already working on that. As a matter of fact, we had a discussion with Walter and with Mac or Patrick as part of our budget meeting this past week. We've been meeting with all the principals on budget meetings and thinking about what we can do to create additional spots that are aligned with the current spots that we have now to where we can get maybe for that sophomore class, to where we can get, when they're seniors, the whole senior class, at least that part. So we are working on that currently.
Okay. So we also talked about Middletown Matters. We talked about the Middletown Matters, I guess you'd call it a magazine or newsletter that comes in the mail. And we spoke to the mayor, he said it's a thousand dollars to add a page. But the MAC and the library get a page for free. So he said that at pre-org, they would discuss whether or not the district would be entitled to a free page, which I sort of responded, I don't think we need a free page. I think a little blurb would be fine for us. And he said, a little blurb would be fine. And we could contact him on a as-needed basis. If you want a blurb in that physical paper that comes out, you would need to tell him that on March first, 2020. So if we'd like to get something ready for this next one, the deadline would be March first. And for the minutes for the email that goes out on Friday, the deadline is Wednesday. So if ever anyone has an idea, if you want me to reach out to the mayor about, if you want to put in a little blurb in the Friday minutes, please do. And as long as I get to him by Wednesday, he says I'll put it in by Friday, we'll do it for us.
I think the paper, once a year, would be nice to have.
A page.
A lot. Well, I'm just saying a page to, to advertise all the things that are going on, all the things that have been done, the new offerings or anything new that's come up in the district that we want to advertise. I mean, when you read it, there's so many things.
Twice a year, right? I think. It might be a page of something that people would take out and say, I'm going to hold on to this. It's informative, right? Information. It's got dates on it that are reported.
I support that. Yeah. I think that's great. So it would cost us two thousand dollars a year, but it might get us a lot.
They say they have a free one. Didn't they say free?
Oh, we're going to talk about it at pre-org.
That's free. I like that.
All right. You like free, I'm going to write that down for the next meeting. I'll just discuss it the next meeting. I'll tell them we're interested, we're interested in talking.
You're talking about all kinds of reasons all over town. And we're a big entity that, you know, has a lot to talk about and people are interested in reading about.
Okay. I think he felt like he couldn't make a decision right now and change what we're having. So post, so our next meeting, we'll talk about it again, we'll bring it up again. Perfect. And that is all I have. Yes. That is all I have to report. Does anyone else from the shared services committee want to report anything?
The track by River Plaza, update on that.
Yeah. Update. The track River Plaza is that, I have those on that. They, you know, they're, they're working on getting the funding for that, right? Help me out here a lot.
Well, there's, there's two, there's two projects going on by River Plaza. And one of them is the, the tract of land right next to River Plaza, which we, everybody who first just cleared the property. And the, the status of that is that the, they did look into getting some estimates on what it would cost to, to the township to borrow that project and also incorporate some improvements to our site at River Plaza to tie into the potential parking they want to put on that site and so forth. And long story short, the estimates came back significantly higher than what they had anticipated would be. So they are looking at reworking their plans and trying to cut the cost down and get a new estimate on that. But we haven't received any further updates on that, but, you know, we will hopefully in the near future. The other project that's going on is the safe routes to school. And that was the large million dollar grant that was received to do improvements, a long hover there. They are, there's several things going into that. First of all, they're looking for an engineering firm to work with because it's a grant, there's a list of firms that you pick from. It's not, you know, your normal process. You have to take one of the state-approved firms. So they're determining which firm they're going to work with. After they do that, they can start developing a plan. But they were also talking about the potential impact of other projects in that area, particularly improvements and repairs to the dam that's over there and the bridge. And those would be projects that would be done by the county. And doing that work in the area could impact, you know, this project. We have, actually Toni Merkattani had just shared with us and others to, you know, going back and forth today about some of these issues. And then the, the issue came up, well, is there a timeline on the grant? Do we have to get it done a certain amount of time? And yes, there is a two-year timeline on the grant, but the history has been, you know, if you talk, if you tell the state why you need more time, you know, to do this project, that there are other major roadwork projects going on in the area that we've completely impacted, that an extension of time could be negotiated. So all of these things are issues that the township is dealing with, but their first step is to get the engineering firm on board and start moving forward and talk to the county about their projects. So that's, that's where that stands. They're moving forward, not at lightning speed, but they are moving forward.
All right. So we'll move on to strategic planning. So for strategic planning, we have gotten up to Form 3A. Moving on to Form 3B, we have a solidified date for February 12th for Form 3B. And we're going to try to have a phone call tomorrow with the district plans, Dr. George, John Little, you know, if Nick and Ben are able to, the committee may get us on a call to discuss specifics as to what we're going to discuss at 3B and to give the committee an idea of where we're going forward after 3B, what they can look forward to with that. So that's basically where we are right now as far as the strategic planning.
Did he say, did he say when he's going to put the links up for the public to look for comments? He told me on the way out, he told me on the way out that he had talked to Dr. George about that. But I didn't know when he was going to put the link up and how we would let the public know that that link is available.
There was this discussion on that in those comments, for those that have to look through those comments, that there were references to names and employees at the district. So we, twofold, we're going to go look at, yeah, so we're going to go, go, have to look at how we would redact any information that could in any way make the board liable based on, you know, names and information of employees and personal comments that were put up there or comments that would not be appropriate. So I, I know that was something that we, you know, that we didn't have an opportunity to speak at length to, but I think that is a, we're going to have to overcome first.
Yeah, I, you know, just having skimmed, you know, a bunch of those comments, there's, there's some really good ideas in there. Some people had a lot of really thoughtful, constructive, positive things to say. And then there's some absolute unbelievable racist, sexist, misogynistic garbage in there that should prove, I mean, you get people a tax policy, you really can't, you know, control what they're going to do. I would not be comfortable publishing that under the district's letter. I think that's, it's a terrible idea.
Well, there were also specific names.
Well, beyond that, I mean, just, just beyond what Dr. George said, even if we stripped out, even if we stripped out, you know, references to specific people, I mean, there's just some terrible ugliness in there. You know, for, you know, and it's, it's a minority of comments, you know, the majority of people took it seriously. Some people wrote a lot of words. But there's just some trash in, in that. Just, I don't know if it was people thought it was a joke or whatever, but there's some stuff in there that it was hard to read and I would hate to see us publish that under our letter. It just wouldn't, I, I just don't think it's constructive.
We have to take time to redact it.
We would, which is time that is spent on other things, I feel.
And it's, it's 10,000 comments. So we're talking about 10,000 comments, even though the vast majority of them are not represented in this conversation, it would, it would be very difficult to, to redact every comment or, so that's what we consider.
The reason I asked is because of Form Two, when we were at High School South, he made that comment publicly that if anybody wanted to review those 10,000 comments, and people are asking. And I'm sure they're not looking, I'm sure they're not looking to look at them for what you're saying.
Right.
But budget season's coming up and people are interested in what other people's opinions are and, you know, they would give them some input to come to the mic with their own suggestions and.
It is interesting.
And suggest that other people might have had.
It gives a real perspective on the entire community at Middletown, not just your little world. You know, when you see all the other comments, not everyone's thinking like you are. It supports the, you know, percentages on the survey, you know? You can see why 53% wanted this, wanted X because you could see the comments. So it is helpful, but I agree with Nick, some of the stuff is, some of those expertises are.
And the problem, and the problem is that if we redact, then we open ourselves up for accusations of selective redacting or withholding other information, you know, would. You know, whether you're telling us, it's just, it's, I'm very uncomfortable with it. But again, not because I'm trying to act, you know, with a lack of transparency. It's just that there's stuff that.
I'll bring you up a date tomorrow and we can see, you know, what he suggests.
And he's probably going to have to come up with the next form and retract what he said. So that's.
Maybe that's what I would do.
Yes.
No, no, you just say, you know, after going through it.
He probably, and when he made that comment, that was only in session two. He made a.
He didn't know what he was getting into.
Yeah.
So personnel, we did. And so I'm going to move on to open comments to the public on agenda items only. So anything on the agenda? Okay, so nobody comes to the microphone. We're going to move on to the report of the president. I feel like I've said a lot tonight.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Right, oh, a motion to approve the minutes, sorry. A motion to approve the minutes from executive session 11/2019 and the regular voting meeting on 11/2019.
Sub move, second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Abstentions.
Okay, thank you, Tony. So moving past the report of the president, on to the business administrator or secretary. I need a motion to approve E1 through, I'm sorry, E1 through 4.
Sub move, second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Moving on to the report of the superintendent.
I'd like to make a motion for items 1 through 5. I do have a superintendent, I'll update him after that, but items 1 through 5.
Okay, I need a motion to approve C1 through 5.
Sub move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed on number 1.
Abstentions.
Okay, a couple of things. First of all, this time of year is not only a favorite time of year for a lot of people with the holidays coming, just the holiday, the spirit of the year. But on top of that, our holiday concerts and the ability to, of our students, particularly down in the, starting at the elementary level, when it comes to the chorus and the, and also the instrumental concerts that are going on across the district is really amazing. And it really speaks to the comprehensive education that our students receive here in Middletown. And it really, really is great to see tremendous evidence of the programs and the initiatives. That's the first thing. The second thing is that, as you may or may not be aware, but we really tried hard to get it out there, we have a survey for the school community as it relates to getting input for the upcoming calendar. And so far, we've had over 2,000 responses. And that closes this Friday. But I put, I put the current one up on the board portal along with an explanation of what that information is telling us and then a starting point to develop the final calendar. We have a draft when we come out of calendar committee. Calendar committee is going to be on January 6th. There'll be a draft that'll come out of that after we meet with parents. There's a couple of parents on that, all the different collective bargaining units come together with parents and administrators and we, and we collect the board members. Joan Minnweez and Leonore Camenidi are on that committee. So that's going to be on January 6th. And then after that, we will bring a draft calendar to the board. I have put on the board portal that point, which is just a point calendar. It's really a conversation starter. It's not anything more than that. But addition to that, after consulting with the board president, we've put together a schedule for board meetings for review. Now, this is not taking action on tonight. We will not take action on that to the reord meeting. But that is also up there, but there's some important intentions in that. Number one, before our next strategic planning forum on February 12th, not only will we have an action board meeting, but it's our intent to have a budget meeting as well. And I think that's important in informing the strategic planning process of moving forward. I just want to say on that, on that calendar that was posted there today with a very busy board, and it just kind of gives the general public an idea of just how much volunteerism is involved with this board. There are 19 meetings on there before we do anything like our summer retreat or even our committee meetings. So you're, I want to bet the board for their comprehensive volunteerism. And I know that some of those dates might have to change because you all have careers and jobs and, but we just wanted to get something on that, up there that the board could work off of. On top of that, at the request of the board president, is also the 12-month calendar. It's just, it's again, just a point off of where we are at the beginning calendar. It's consistent with previous years and a past bargaining practice. So that, again, that's just a point, but those things are up there and I wanted to make sure that the board was aware of that because they were just put up there today and I know it would be as busy as life. So I wanted to, I wanted to point that out as part of my president's report. I also wanted to wish everybody, the public and the board, happy holidays and thank you all for all you do and just happy holidays. Enjoy the season.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we are moving on. Okay, I need a motion to approve 13A. Nothing there, nothing there. Ah, I need a motion to approve 13B, 1 through 4, and then there's something on the addendum over here. Ah, we're withdrawing 3, so just 1 through 4, please.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. For policy, I need a motion to approve.
We have something on the addendum for facilities.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion to approve C1, please.
Sub move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. So now I can move on to policy. I need a motion to approve D1.
No accidents.
No accidents, sorry. Okay, so now I need a motion to approve E1 and 2. And with the addition of the addendum.
Sub moved.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
I'm abstaining on the addendum, E1.
E1, the addendum, okay. Okay, I need a motion to approve F1.
Sub moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. So I need a motion to approve G1.
Sub move. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. I need a motion to approve personnel. It's on the addendum, I1.
Sub moved.
Through 16.
Sub move. Second.
Discussion.
Just a question, I know there, does the numbering out of order not matter? We skip from 12 to 16 and we skip the number 2? Does that matter at all?
On the regular personnel report, it's 1 through 15. And then on the addendum, we have, we have additional items. So the 16 is the only additional item on the addendum.
All right, roll call vote since we're having a moment here.
So we're voting on all personnel items, 1 through 16, those on the report and plus the items on the addendum.
Yes, please, roll call vote.
I'm sorry, you seconded that?
I did, second.
Roll call, Mrs. Camenidi?
Yes.
Mr. DeFranco?
Yes.
Mr. Donlin?
Yes.
Mr. Daimo?
Yes, but I'm staying on item I6. 6D, I6, let it be.
Let it be. Mrs. Minnweez?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Stella?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodden?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Moving on to old business.
I don't know if it's old business, but what's up with now with the, we voted on? We, we financed before, we financed, I'm financing, we took out services and stuff. I think this is for the kids like in wrestling and in football where they work out. Stuff that we got rid of.
It's, it's right, it's in the away room.
Okay, so we did a survey, but could we replace this stuff?
There was some new equipment purchased, yes.
Okay, was this stuff replaced, like, or do they not need this at all anymore? Is it obsolete?
I, this equipment was considered to be obsolete. I don't, I don't have the list of what was purchased.
I don't want to list, I just want to make sure.
But they did put equipment they thought was more appropriate.
Whatever the, whatever body thought this equipment worked out, that we have stuff, because I'm sure our football players, no, our football players and our wrestling people, they, the kids, they need it.
Right. And the equipment that was purchased was meant to address those needs.
Okay, that's all I want to make sure of. Other thing, I guess, I don't know. How the committee can, do you have a time or a place where we're meeting?
It will be in central office.
Do you have any idea around in the afternoon? I just want to walk.
And if.
You're not sure?
I, yeah, there was an email. I just thought of the minutes too, yeah.
Thank you.
It's consistent with what we've done in the past, but there was an email that went out. And if it's, yeah.
You say consistent in what we did in the past, you know.
I know, I know. I just honestly, off the top of my head, I didn't remember exactly what time it was.
Thank you, that's all, that's what I, my, your second.
I think the board would like an update on that Turning Point Club. I know you updated me, but if we could have an update on the Turning Point Club for the whole, the whole board.
Yeah, there, there. There has been one meeting. And since, since our last meeting, and you've requested more information on that meeting, I put that request out to the administration and I will update the board when I receive that. But to the best of my knowledge, that club is, obviously as previously spoken, is unsanctioned by the Board of Education, but it is working within, you know, the regularly processes and procedures of all clubs and within the student handbook. And there has been nothing that has been suggested that in any way is of concern. So for me, it's not getting any more scrupie than any other club, nor do, as I reported out previously, nor do I deem that we should be giving it any more. You know, students are, you know, in good standing and the club is being right appropriately.
Thank you. Anybody else for old business? Moving on to new business?
I have some new business. It's just I was able to get the numbers for the Arts Academy since we were talking about it before. So there, we have a total of 73 students in the Arts Academy of 9th and 10th graders. So far, only one student has dropped since the academy has started. It was a high school north student in the instrumental music track. 11 of the 73 students were originally zoned for high school south. There are nine dancers in this first year from all three. Bayshore, Thompson, and the North communities are represented in the dance track right now. And some kids are in multiple tracks, but here's the enrollment in the tracks. Digital media, we have 21 students. Fine arts 17, drama 16, dance 9, vocal music, and is that instrumental? Yeah, instrumental 3, so. Does anybody have questions?
Did you tell us, tell me again what the name of the class is at South? Was it digital?
Digital. Digital.
There, there's no one from North in here.
Wait.
There was a class at South that you explained at the CIRPA committee that no one from North was attending.
Oh, um, well, we have 11 students, but from South. So you're saying that they're all in the digital media track? Is that what you said?
What she explained to us was one of the courses, right, Leonore Jumping? Because you were both questioning it.
It was, no, no, it's not at South, it's the North. No, guys, the North children are not attending the media, the digital media class.
At high school South?
They're offered at those schools, digital media is.
Or, what? Help me.
I'm not aware of any class at high school South.
Or academy or track. There's one of the supervisors who said it and it kind of struck us like, wow, now there's nobody attending that course and there's only a couple coming from South over to North.
The TV studio, no, TV studio.
What was it, lines? No, it has to, it has to do with the media sector, remember?
So you mean it's part of the.
Part of it at the tracks, it was under the Arts Academy.
And so it's through the Arts Academy that you're talking about? There are no Arts Academy exclusive courses offered only at South. The only Arts Academy courses that are offered exclusively in one high school or another are only offered at North.
Then we have to have the wrong class because the supervisor specifically said it and everybody looked, that we're having the same problem at South, that no one from North is coming over to take that class. So it has to be the class that's only offered at South.
Well, just a suggestion, if you want me to, I can email either Mrs. Morales, because she's in charge of the digital.
It wasn't her that gave the update. It was Cindy Van Clam who gave the update.
So that wouldn't be in Arts Academy? Right, yeah, no, that's not Arts Academy.
It was given under the Arts Report.
It wasn't, is it a general course? And it had to do with media.
It just, the thing that caught my mind is that our whole goal was to get kids to switch over and actually create good academies. We're not going to get tuition students to join our academies if we can't establish them, that's my point. Maybe I didn't say it right before.
So this is good, so we're doing it in the business now.
We want to establish them, but if we don't have the numbers, maybe we need to start looking, you know, if the kids aren't switching, and that's their priority, you know, if they want to be with their friends or whatever, maybe we need to find another way to make sure that everybody has those courses. Or maybe we need to find if the numbers are small. Say dance doesn't grow again next year and it stays at 9. We talked about so many other different tracks like culinary or whatever. Maybe there's more kids interested in those tracks that we should be focusing on. And I'm not saying drop dance, I would look to see where we can place those kids to get into a good academy. Maybe it has to be another district if there's, there's only a few.
Well, right now, in terms of culinary, students tend to go to the county, the county vocational schools have such great programs. And for us to offer culinary here, we would have to invest in kitchens and ventilation.
I just, I just, it was just an example because it was an example for us.
Sure.
About using our kitchen.
Wait, I just want to say something about these departments. Before we do more, hey, I don't, let's, I don't want to get into trouble. But we need to have the best of the best teaching the academy because that will attract the students from within our district and with outside of, and outside of our district. We want to get community people in. That's what I think we have to be looking at. Before we try to just do. That's what I think we have to be looking at, before we try to just do more than. If we don't have the right professionals in place teaching it, it doesn't matter how many we have, and not.
Well, it, it would also seem that, you know, we're in, this is year two of the Arts Academy, right? So I, I feel like we can't make a problem, it's almost like a recruiting class for, um, for, for college sports, right? You can't make a, a real assessment until four years, where you've had kids go all the way through. So if we have children come through the Arts Academy and they get placed at competitive colleges and are getting good jobs, that's when the academies recruit in, I think, I think you made a good point with faculty, but I would be interested to find out, say, from Fremont Regional, who have the academies at the different high schools, and you can like live in Coltsnet and go to Howell or go to Borough or go to one of the other schools to attend an academy. When they saw real growth of those academies, was it within the first couple of years? Or was it after they had established a graduating class or two, and people at the eighth grade level got to hear that so-and-so, or these kids went to this academy, and now they are at these colleges, which is a really good track? Because right now, we don't, we can't advertise effectively to our eighth graders to say this is the outcome, right? So, and their parents wouldn't hear that.
But you know, the talk is the best thing, when kids go out and start talking about what's going on within the academy, that's all I'm saying.
Oh, no, yeah.
It's all, it's like, it's on social media, it goes out there to everybody. We don't need, the statistics are forward, but the talk is. That's it.
I, I just feel like after two years, it's, it's, it might be a little early, but I, I think you're right, I, I agree with you, Joe. After all, I, I do agree, we need to look at this and figure out how to grow it. Uh, but I'd, I'd be interested to hear from the other districts who have academies, when they saw growth, if it was two years, three years, four years, whatever. I think that would be an interesting statistic.
And I think the other next thing we have to do, it's like Leonor said, what do we do to attract the kids to want to join these tracks? Because there are so many girls out there dancing, I'm using dance because it was the lowest number. I watched them perform at both high schools, there is so many involved and so many that are looking to go into that career. And I've talked to a few parents, they're, they're considering adding districts, you know, programs for the kids who decide some track they want to take. Why are they not looking at ours? That's what I want to know. There's got to be a reason.
I just want to clarify, dance is not the lowest rolling track.
Well, I'm using that because that's the most talked about.
I just clarify.
Around, there's so many kids out there that said they were interested, but they're not coming.
Instrumentals are based, talking about as far as music and stuff?
Those are typically ensemble type students.
So let's ask, um, Mr. Graziano for an update at the next curriculum meeting, the specifics, um, taking into consideration the other districts, um, and how they grew their program, and ask him how many students are actually going, uh, who were zoned for South are actually going to North, and then we can look at the evidence and, you know, and, and have a further discussion. He did?
Yeah.
And maybe also. I'm just reiterating, I'm sorry, Rob just reiterated, it's eleven.
Yeah.
Only eleven.
How can we get more?
Well, and, and how, and, and maybe, you know, to reach out to, uh, to Fremont Regional to say, what do they do culturally, right? To get kids from Howell to go to Township, to get kids from Marlboro to go to Coltsnet, like, you know, because we want kids from South to leave their friends, or kids from Thompson, you know, you know, we want kids from one, from one set of middle schools to leave their friends and go to another, go to a different high school, right? So how did they get kids at, you know, Coltsnet Middle Schools to, to leave their friends behind to go to Howell to, to attend an academy? Like, what, you know, was there, is it just, uh, something that takes time to build in, is there some messaging they use? Like, I'm, I'm curious to see how they do that.
Yeah, and we can have further, we, we have had conversations with them, and, um, I can speak to his early conceptions. The, um, the learning centers in Fremont Regional, so I actually was one of the first classes of students at Fremont Township. Um, when we first started those, those learning academies as they were originally called in the regional, um, we had one class per grade, so twenty-five students. I think that was the second class, actually, no, we can't, I don't see. Um, so we had, so in a sense, we have in some ways exceeded that with our seventy-three students after two years' worth of enrollment. Um, but we will talk more recently, you know, we, we will get more recent, but Mr. Graziano has been collaborating with the, um, impact, the, I think it's called the impact, the performing art, um, at Howell, that is where their Arts Academy is how, is housed. There is a little bit of a difference in the regional system in that typically, um, they have experienced more rezoning, and, um, I'll use the word redistricting, um, that happens more, um, often in that district. So there isn't as much, um, historical zoning, so, so students are, are kind of used to, you know, yeah, not as entrenched in, or there isn't that expectation that I, I might be going to a different school at any given time.
And of course, you know, I think everyone on the board, all the administration, the teachers, everyone wants the Arts Academy to, to do well. So we're open to ideas and, you know, we're really looking to expand the program as much as possible.
And we're very proud of our student representatives who come to many events, um, and speak on behalf of the Arts Academy. Um, they speak very, I mean, just the, last week, I guess it was, or the week before, when we had our pathway and academy fair, um, the students from the Arts Academy did an excellent job in talking about their experiences, um, both the current freshmen, as well as the students in their second year as tenth graders, um, they really sell, I mean, they're kind of like our best advertisement, quite honestly. They really speak very positively of their, of their experience.
And those rooms were packed.
And I would say that's probably further evidenced by the fact that we've only had one student who has decided to withdraw from the academy over the two years, and, um, again, he was a North student, an instrumental music student.
And also, I went to the, um, culminating, I guess, performance last year in June, and it was fantastic. I mean, I can't believe, you know, what's coming out of this, you know, seeing the, the artwork and seeing the performances.
And a lot on one instruction, I think, it being such a small program, it was very obvious that those teachers are really hands-on with each individual child, you know, when they did their solo performances, their vocal performances, you know, I think there's, there's kind of a beauty to it being small for now. I know we want to grow it, but, yeah, they are getting a lot of attention, which is good too.
And this year, we actually recruited a student from, um, one of the private schools.
Oh, great.
He was not a student in, um, one of our middle, he or she was not a student in one of our public middle schools, they came from the private school and, uh, registered for the Arts Academy.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
All the way to the right, okay? Question for you.
Yes.
Can an out-of-district student pay to go to school in Middletown?
Yes.
I thought during a recent, something or other, we, we, we stated that you cannot live out of town and pay to go there, because if it is, what is that tuition?
We have, we don't have tuition students in the.
The answer is no, right? If I'm, if I'm out of district.
Tuition students.
No, 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 if I'm out of district, if I have a student who, and I want to go to school in Middletown, can I pay you X amount money to go to Middletown?
No.
Right, the answer is no, correct?
The answer is no.
Okay, so question for you.
Individual parent pay, your district may pay, so we do have some districts paying for students that would say, uh, students from Monmouth Regional right now, we have in our school, um, the district is paying us for a program that we have that they do not have. So we get paid for that district, but no parent will just.
Okay, so. Alright, so, somebody who wants to attend the academies, their school is going to pay tuition for those students to come, is that correct?
So we have an affiliation agreement with Keansburg, for example, and, um, because we have that affiliation agreement, and some of our students can attend their criminal justice academy, um, we don't collect any tuition because it's a shared agreement. There's, um, benefit on both sides, but that, I, I would assume.
We, we already had one student that, uh, went through that program that actually is in the Police Academy.
Yes, yes.
So, I guess my question is, Leonor, for, for about having students that are out of district come into our program to help boost those programs. How is that allowed and how does that work?
Right now, we do not have a policy that allows students to come in because they, their parents decide they want to pay us tuition. That is not allowed in our policy, it's not something the policy committee wants to look at, they can change the policy, and I know we have talked about it over the years, but, um, you know, there's still that decision to make that policy change.
If we're offering the dance track, so to speak, and somebody in Marlboro wants to get into the dance track, what do they have to do, or they just can't?
Well, they would have to convince their district to pay for that, and I doubt they will do that.
Okay.
I think, I think if we were an established academy, which is what's going, which is really what we're trying, trying to do and saying what we feel is holding us back a little bit, if we were an established academy, those districts might agree, because then there might be something that their district are going to. The only way people are going to pay tuition to come here, even if we change our policy, is if we are an established, then we can prove that we have success in those academies. So it's going to be a while, but I think that was the whole goal of starting the academies too, just so that we could bring people in. But I think it's going to be a while.
Is that something the board is interested in us talking about, like?
Our next policy meeting?
Yeah, I, I, I would agree.
I'd be open to that.
I mean, and, and I don't necessarily think that it should be limited to the students who want to attend the academies. I mean, and we can, you know, as a parent, I could send my daughter to RBR and pay tuition. Um, you know, so other districts do it, and, you know, I'd be interested to know the, the, the pros and cons, obviously.
Okay.
Um, you know, but I think it's something that we should, you know, I, I would love to see the policy committee pursue it.
Okay. Wait a minute, I have a question. We're talking about regu- regular education degree as far as we're talking about classes.
I'm talking about, talking about it.
Why would we intend that open crowd, like, you know, for the classroom?
We have lower enrollment, so.
We have low enrollment, so we have high enrollment, and we, we're over, we have a lot of room in Bay Shore, we have a lot of room at Monmouth.
I agree.
That's a lot of room, so if we, you know, if, if, if a parent says.
Why do we have to eat the whole class? Why can't we just take a little piece of the class and work on our academies?
Why do you want to not talk about it? Why not look at the pros and cons holistically and determine if it's?
Because I want to work on our open cracking within our district first and talk about that and get some, do something with that. And then, um, all for us making money, because making money helps us to develop kids in our district.
I feel like we can walk and shoot down, like, we could have both of them.
That's more than that.
We can do it, the policy committee will.
Only, only if we agree, coming in, that we're directing that track, like, to the low enrollment schools.
Well, I, but that, but that's, that's part of, that's part of the policy, right?
We have to get through the first, I, I agree, the long-range plan is part of what we're doing.
It's not going to happen tomorrow, but I mean, I think a part of the policy discussion would be, how do we amend the policy? Is there a provision in the policy that says if you're a tuition-paying student, your placement is at the discretion of the, of the Board of Education or the administration? That's fair, because then we're not going to take, you know, twenty middle schoolers from out of the district, including Thompson, right?
I hope not, because then your neighbors.
Right, but that, but, but that's my point, like, if we can use that to increase our educational efficiency numbers by getting, you know, tuition-paying students at some of the lower enrollment schools, that seems like a win to me, so let's, let's talk about it.
I do agree that we should read some strategic plans so that we can hear the public input and what direction they wish to go.
I have another question about, you say policy committee, is it a policy committee?
Yes, we have a policy committee, the poor policy committee gets put on the back burner, uh, because of all our other strategic planning meetings and such. But yes, we intend on having another meeting someday, right?
Someday.
Like, we get bumped to the back, yeah, we get bumped to the back of the line. For other very important things, so, all right, so now I would like to, if no one else has any new business?
I have more, I have more news.
Sister.
I have a que- I have a question regarding the Board of Education meetings that you put out.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, one, if, if you go forward with this schedule, you theoretically have one, two, three, four budget meetings by the time, by the time we have an initial budget vote. Is that what, that was your plan, okay? And the second thing is that, is everything at seven o'clock at night?
I mean, I mean, again, this is a.
Tentative, I understand it.
Yeah.
Okay.
For discussion, it really is not going to be voted on until January second, so if the board has feedback, I was really just trying to, uh, get information out for consideration, it's really a starting point, so I would say communicate with the board president and dormia superintendent, and we'll, we'll discuss it and discuss with the board.
Okay.
Are you looking to follow the down, yes, only one meeting a month, that's how we go to work?
I like the one meeting a month, personally. Um, I think we have so much other, so many other things on our plate with the strategic planning and everything else, the budget meetings, and it really works for me, I like the committee meetings, I feel like I learn a lot in committee, and I think that the chairs do a really good job. We've been working really hard, um, to get the agendas out and to get the synopses out, and then to reiterate the synopses in public. Uh, I think we've been working, we're not perfect yet, but we're getting there.
If you're going to have one meeting a month, I don't want that shut down, when people talk and want to discuss it. I don't want, because you got to have discussion, this is good, the discussion that's going on. And I don't agree with you, Dr. George, about like, we're, that we're going to vote on it on the second, we need to talk about it now. Because I'm not going to sit and write you an email.
I think the idea is like, you know, we have to go through reorg, right? We don't, right, we have to vote on leadership, we have to go through all the motions.
I think you want to discuss it.
So I, I also like the one meeting a month, but I think if you look at the draft, you know, one meeting a month is sort of a, a misnomer, because I think we have forty-two meetings in January, February, and March, but I think the idea is that it, to make the one meeting a month thing work, and, right, you know, the committees have to continue to function, you know, at, at a, at a pretty high level. But we also need to be willing to table things that are brought up for a vote, like, to your point, if we feel that we haven't had enough discussion on a particular topic, we have to be willing to table it and bring it up again next month and take that month to work on it a little more and to talk about it and bring it up again. So I, you know, I don't want their, you know, my, my feeling on a, on a, on a one meeting a month thing is that we really need to follow, what is it called, Robert's, you know, rules of, of, of meetings, where new businesses are exactly what we're doing right now. This is good for our discussion, we have a lot of good for our discussion, we need to do the reports, we all take our notes, we get to new business, and if actions that we want to follow, we do it in new business, if there's something that comes up, we need to table it and bring it up, because there's not enough information, we have to be willing to do that for each other, you know, but I think, I think this group.
I just want discussion, I want the discussion, that, that's what makes us highly functional.
Do we want to just give me feedback right now on this calendar, for whoever?
That was my thing.
And then, if, if you can't think of it tonight, email me?
No, that was my.
Okay.
That, that's it, okay.
My, my only feedback on looking at it is that I, I just, as I was reading it, I was anticipating that later in the year, especially when September comes in, we'll be filling in additional meetings as we start to take action on whatever comes out of strategic planning. So my anticipation is that we'll, we'll end up with more, uh, meetings, so I, I, I like the schedule because it allows us to do that.
There, there's nineteen meetings before any strategic planning after three B, and without our summer retreat. So nineteen is just where we are at this point, so it's always going to be more than one meeting a month. Also, I, I put there that that doesn't include your committee meetings, so it's, it's multiple meetings.
And, you know, we were joking that that's how, um, committee meetings get put on the back burner, right, like the policy committee, this is how it happens, right? Because we have more important things to, to look to, you know. Anybody else want to weigh in now on this?
I think the one meeting has been working, and even our meetings, the one meeting per month, we haven't even been going as late as when we used to have two meetings a month. I feel like we're getting pretty good as a board at communicating, um, in between meetings, whether, I know you do a really good job emailing everybody and giving updates and texting.
It's about the communication in between the meetings.
Yeah, there needs to be communication in between meetings, um, I, I think the portal works out really well, posting information up there so that we can be prepared for our meetings, I think that that's important.
And Dr. George's Friday email update is fantastic.
Yeah, that's. Dr. George has been sending an update to the board as well as to the town every Friday.
That, that just reminds me of something that Chris, Chris Regidio and I are working on right now, um, you know, I have, um, his newsletter every week, which we work on collectively as a, um, to help get information. Chris Rotolo, he's been doing the, the information officer, but on top of that, we're going to come out with, um, a mid, uh, a mid-year magazine, which is kind of, kind of be in, um, in line with, I think, what Leonor and Joe were saying about getting, um, more information out there. And that's also going to be done in coordination with building goals. And that's also going to be done in coordination with building goals, district goals, our strategic plan, what we're dealing with that. Our administrative team has already met on that. Kim is, is working also to take the lead in this. And our administrators, all of our administrators are already collaborating and putting information together as evidence of what we're doing for building goals and district goals. And that's going to be a mid-year newsletter.
Mr. Rogers, one more thing?
Yes. No.
Tabbed out in 45 minutes, so I know. On your meeting days, okay, on this-
Yes, sir.
What I would ask is that you put the time on every line. Because when I'm reading it-
What are we saying here? Oh, yeah, everything's 7:00 PM.
That's, if everything is 7:00, then just say everything is 7:00.
Yeah, everything's 7:00. Oh, it's up here, baby.
Well, no, what it says up there is, it says, "The public meeting following the 7:00 PM course session." So is the public budget meeting at 7:00 or at 8:00?
It could be continued.
Follow me?
Yes. You're saying it's continued for us, not for us.
The intention for the budget meetings would, you know, be at 7:00.
Okay, well, that, can we just?
Yeah, yeah. It's a draft.
Estimated EPM.
For the public.
Right, 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 okay, yes.
Happy holidays.
Today we're in-
Happy holidays, everybody.
I actually have a couple of things that I just wanted to bring up to the Board. First of all, we just wanted to discuss the initiative that Dr. George and I have been discussing about the collaborative effort with the Support Our Students Group to file the Oprah request to the state to get more information on the calculation of the allocation of state aid. At this point, the, this group, which we monitor and participate in discussions with, and are the group of districts that have lost state aid, would like to file a collective Oprah request with as many districts as they can, they're hoping 90, which are the amount of districts that are collaborating with this group, to get the state to, at least to us, information about how state aid is allocated, specifically factors that go into determining the town's ability to pay, the property values, the wealth, the income calculators and so forth. So what we, what they're suggesting that the Board would do would be to pass a resolution to file this Oprah request in conjunction with the other districts to get more information on the state aid calculations, with an option to, in anticipation of the request being denied by the state, because when individual districts have filed Oprah requests to get this information, they've been denied. So in anticipation of that, entering into, you know, a potential challenge to that denial of the Oprah request, which would require the engagement of an attorney that represent these districts to, to take action and file a, a challenge to the state. So the resolution that they're suggesting is for two parts. One, to participate in the Oprah request at no cost. The other would be to give the Board the option to consider joining the effort to challenge the anticipated denial of the request. So what the group had suggested was that the Board put it on the agenda at the reorg meeting. And then they would know how many districts would be participating and they could get the Oprah request put together and filed.
Can I make a motion to put it on the agenda?
You can, we can certainly take a consent to that. I don't think you need a motion to put it on the agenda, but the, the resolution will be an actionable item at the reorg and at that time you would have to vote on it. So if the Board is in agreement, we will-
I'm in agreement.
-put it on the agenda. And the Board can consider it and vote on it on January 2nd.
Good, thanks.
The only other thing I just wanted to draw your attention to, and we did send emails out on this, but we did have our RFP, our Request for Proposals for Broker Services, which were due last Thursday. We received one, two, three, four, six responses and the, all of the responses have been scanned and put on the portal. In addition, we put a summary of the fee proposals only on the portal so you could get an idea of how that looks. So you have the time to review the proposals, review all the components of that. The next step, of course, would be to evaluate the proposals and determine what process the Board would like to utilize to select a firm to recommend for appointment for next year. So I, we just need some guidance on that. I mean, and so we would like to move ahead with that, you know, as soon as we could.
You said all the information's on the portal, on all of them? And there's like six, right?
There are six proposals.
Okay, okay.
So whether that would be, the Board then interviewing firms, the Finance Committee interviews firms, you know, you would just have to decide how you would-
It seems like it would make sense to add, it seems like it would make sense, seems like it would make sense to add this to the Finance Committee meeting, Finance Committee meeting agenda in January and go to the sixth and then bring it to the more, the first four weeks in January. Does that timing work?
We would, I mean, if this firm is going to be appointed for July 1st, they would want to be involved in, in the procurement of coverage, you know, for next year. And the sooner we start that process, the better. So as to answer your question, you know, it would be better to have a decision made in January if we could.
When's our next, do we have a finance assignment meeting on the books?
We don't have one scheduled. We can schedule one.
We should schedule one.
Yeah, that way we can look them over, maybe narrow it down to three for the Board to interview so we don't have to go through all six.
The committee can decide, but, you know, we should probably try to schedule a meeting in early January to do that.
Okay, we'll take the holidays to read.
Yeah, that, that-
I need some time to read through, yeah.
Maybe the first four weeks in January, we get together and talk about it. And I like the idea of taking the sixth and coming out with a recommendation of three for the committee.
Three, that's good.
And then bring that to the full board.
Then you're taking the full word of the process. In the past, we were given the information and we were all allowed to pick our top, top three.
Right.
Everybody should be interviewed.
Well, so we, so the committee would bring a recommendation of three to the full board. The full board, you could do your own review and say I disagree with three and that's perfectly fine. We would decide as a board to move forward.
So you don't want our input?
They're all on the portal. So you can read through and you can tell me what you think.
I understand that, but you're saying the committee will make the three recommendations and we could agree or disagree. We should all be a part of going through those proposals and selecting our top three and it should go that way. Everybody should have a say in who the top three are. It should just be our people.
There's no right or wrong way. What should occur, maybe a personal opinion, but not legal part, procedure, the Board operates on a committee basis, so it's not a comment for committees to make recommendations to the body. As indicated by two board members, for any board member not in the committee, there's no prohibition, no exclusion from reviewing the proposals and giving your input to the committee and to the full board.
It's just not the way it's been done here and it's always worked out fair that everybody had a say in who we should be interviewing. It's not just one group that decides and we give our input afterwards. It doesn't really matter because you only need one more person to agree with you and it's over.
I understand, I'm just making sure that the record is clear that just because it was done a certain way in the past, doesn't mean that the way it goes now is wrong, is what I'm saying. From a legal standpoint, from a procedural standpoint, from an ethical standpoint, just because it was done differently in the past, does not reach the conclusion that this way is wrong. That's what I'm saying.
You feel like you're being shut out of another process.
To me, I understand the committee model as whoever's on the committee, the four of them are going to recommend to me something and I'm going to take it from there. And I trust those people on that committee. But I think what you're saying is you don't, you don't feel comfortable with that.
No, I don't. I feel that we all should have a say. Give our top three. I mean, that's what we did when we hired Lester's firm. Everybody put in your top-
Yeah, we were the committee of the whole back then.
Well, yeah, but there was still, you know, even on academies, that's how it always was. You put in your top three and those, you know, you tally it and those are three interview.
Right, but I, I don't think it was ever said that the consideration of somebody who's not on a committee wouldn't be counted. So if you, so the Finance Committee will meet, we'll have a discussion about it. If you want to contribute to that discussion, I wouldn't throw you the garbage. I would say this is, you know, Joan has already made some choices and this is what Joan thinks, so we would consider that. The point is not to be exclusionary. The point is that we're a board of nine volunteers who also have other things to do with their time. And what's the most efficient way to use our time to reach the best decision? You know, a high-performing organization doesn't have everybody sit on every decision, especially at the starting point, right? If, if you don't trust the Finance Committee to narrow six down to three and then bring those three to the Board so that the Board can then interview those three as a full board, that's a different, that's a different issue. But it's not to be exclusionary, it's to get more done in less time.
It's an effort to be more efficient, that's all.
Well, we're not a high-functioning business. We're all elected to have a say.
Okay, so I think-
You just feel like you're taking our say away.
So then should we all, so should we all be at the, at the, at the Curriculum Committee? Should we all be in the Calendar Committee? That's not going to get everything done. If everybody has to be at every meeting, then nothing gets done. You have nine people voting on these things all the time. I trust you and Leonora to be-
On the calendar.
-the Board's voice on the Calendar Committee. I trust Robin to be the Board's voice on the-
No, I do.
-Committee. I mean, and if I have an issue with it, I'll bring it up with you and we'll have a conversation.
If this is about hiring somebody very important-
No, it's not. But that's the point. It's not about that. It's about getting from six to three. The hiring decision is still made by the full board.
It's still a decision of who you feel is your top three that's going to represent this district and our taxpayers and who's going to be the best buck and we're all going to have different opinions.
That's fine.
So why not just give your input via email?
Yeah, give me your top three. Anyone who wants to give me your top three?
Yeah, I mean-
I'll bring it to that committee meeting.
If I feel strongly, you know, about any particular appeal-
Full disclosure, I haven't read-
And one, yes.
Everybody puts their top three in.
No, no, but I probably won't. But if I felt strongly, I would. But right now I'm trusting in the committee.
Whoever, whoever wants to.
Yeah, if you want to.
Okay, so let's move on from this. Can we go to public comment or does anyone else have new business?
There was actually just one thing. I'm sorry, there was one thing that you heard. So New Jersey School Boards, I think back at the end of September, beginning of October, issued their final report on the task force on mental health services in public schools. I don't know if any of the board members have had a chance to read it. I have. It's a very long report. It's also a very chilling report. As someone who spent many years advocating for adults living with mental illness, what this sort of grapples with, with our youth in our schools and especially the, the ever-increasing number of children being diagnosed with mental illness at much younger ages is very frightening in a lot of ways. But it also had a lot of great recommendations in it for school districts. I know some of which, and I recognize some of which we're redoing here in Middletown, which is really great. But I was just wondering if there is a way, if there's any recommendations in this report that perhaps we're not doing, if it's something that we can then incorporate, if we can get some kind of report on that. I don't know if it's something that we could maybe incorporate in a Student Services Committee meeting, like in the future, but I just wanted to raise that tonight because it is a really important subject.
And it ties into our strategic planning discussions because social and emotional learning was, was mentioned multiple times, so I think that would be great. I have, there is a menorah lighting. It's the first-ever menorah lighting at the MAC in Middletown, December 22nd at 6:30. So I think that's pretty exciting. I know I'll be in attendance. Happy holidays, everybody. If nobody else has any other new business, we can move on to public comment.
If I did this wrong, I apologize.
If you could just say your name and, your name and your address.
Sure.
We do limit it to three minutes each here. It's not to discourage you, it's just so that everybody can speak.
Lisa Leek, 117 Harbor Way in Belford. I want to thank you guys for allowing me to speak tonight. I would like to begin by expressing my deepest appreciation and respect for the teachers and administration at Bayview who have enabled my son Jace to excel beyond all expectations. Jace was diagnosed with autism at the age of three and has been in the Middletown Public School system ever since. His emotional and academic success is a byproduct of small class sizes and individualized instruction which was afforded to him by the teachers at Bayview. In his six years there, he has never been in a class size larger than 16 or 17 students. From day one, he was able to receive the fundamental social skills and pure modeling that have turned him into the empathetic, kind-hearted child he is today. Dr. George, you had the opportunity to spend time with Jace at a board meeting a couple of months ago where he was being recognized for his artwork on the district calendar. This may have been one of the proudest moments of his life, especially when he shook his hand and congratulated him personally. His ability to appropriately interact with you and have a well-developed conversation was due to the education that has been afforded to him during his years at Bayview. Jace has not only met or exceeded expectations on all standardized tests, but he will be entering Bayshore next year fully capable of continuing his education in a mainroom classroom. As we all know, the early years are essential to producing well-rounded individuals capable of the emotional and academic success that we expect from our children, and that I can proudly say I see in Jace. Looking at it from a holistic standpoint, it is Middletown's goal to engage and develop a whole person physically, emotionally, mentally and cognitively. The goal is to empower children to use their academic learning as a foothold for their emotional and social development. Currently, our two kindergarten classrooms are too overcrowded for the emotional and social well-being of our children to be a primary focus, while at the same time furthering their academic success. Being able to develop these skills in a kindergarten classroom filled with 25 five-year-olds with one teacher present is an impossible feat. Throughout a single day, a teacher will need to address a multitude of social and behavioral issues that undoubtedly occur in a room of that magnitude. If he or she is constantly stopping to address the issues and then model the appropriate behavior, the rest of the class is having to wait to continue instruction. They are not in an age where they will continue to self-drive and work independently without the guidance of the teacher, so instructional time is continuously being interrupted. Furthermore, students with individualized education plans are not being afforded the necessary extended attention to address their modifications and accommodations. A special education teacher is only present for one hour throughout the day, which means the majority of the time the single teacher is required to meet all of the individual needs without any support. Research indicates that if the fundamental social and academic skills are not acquired by third grade, the child will be unable to recover and the gap will continue to grow. Moving to the academic and data side of the issue, considering we are a data-driven district, I want to discuss our current fourth graders, which my son Caden is one of them. They had the opportunity to have small class sizes kindergarten through second grade. When third grade began, their three classes were combined into two classes of 28 students. At the end of last year, they took their first round at the NJSLA. The overall data supports my claim that large class sizes have negatively impacted the ability of our children to receive the necessary small group interventions that enable the missing skills to be addressed. When our current fifth graders, who have always had small class sizes, took the assessment in third grade, 68% met or exceeded expectations. On the other hand, when our current fourth graders took the third grade assessment last year, only 38% met or exceeded expectations.
The man's words are up. That time, your time is up. Please wrap it up. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I, I, I'm fine with wrapping it up and at the same time, all seven of us are here about the same issue. So I'm speaking, I'm speaking for all seven of the parents here.
I'm just trying to just comply with the rules. As indicated by the Board President, you use speakers three minutes. Typically, the Board is, like, defer to time of other speakers. That's why I'm glad you actually do it in mind, just, you know, just wrap it up. I say wrap it up, not trying to be rude, but saying just not other, you have three minutes, that's all. And other speakers are more than welcome to put on the microphone and speak. And other speakers are more than welcome to the microphone and speak. Just trying to comply with the rules and the policies of this board of education that's in their policy manual, we need speakers three minutes, a couple of time per...
Do you want me to have one of them finish my speech? I'm fine with that.
If you're finished, that's fine, I was trying to be polite by saying you can conclude your comment, ma'am. If you have another three or five minutes, then yes, cast it to someone else.
I probably have two more minutes, sir.
Time's up, ma'am, thank you.
Do you want me to come finish it?
I also want to add that the administrative team will be available to discuss after, if you so choose.
I'm Susan, I live at the Oakwood Drive in Belfort. I have four kids at Bayview, we're new to the area. Okay, so continuing with what Lisa was saying, when our current fifth graders, who have always had small class sizes, took the assessment in third grade, 68% met or exceeded expectations. On the other hand, when our current fourth graders took the third grade assessment last year, only 38% met or exceeded expectations. As a form of response to intervention teacher that pushed it to classroom, in order to provide these essential services, I can attest to the astronomical difference that it makes in their lives. There is no possibility for a single teacher to provide all of these services in a classroom this size without the necessary support. In my opinion, the timing issue is most prevalent around the writing block, which, as we know, is a major area on the standardized tests. The fourth grade has a 40-minute block for writers workshop. One of the key components for a writers workshop is the time that is supposed to be allocated to conferences with the students. These five-minute conferences are essential to providing relevant feedback to each of the students. In a class of 27 students, it takes a total of two hours and 15 minutes to spend five minutes with each of the students. In a 40-minute block, that would take almost four days to meet each of the students one time. Please explain to me, or us, when a teacher is supposed to provide the instructional mini lessons, if it takes almost a whole week just to conference? Furthermore, please explain how a five-minute conference once a week is providing that essential feedback that writers workshop emphasizes as a key component to making successful writers? How can we expect writing to improve when this is the amount of time being dedicated to it? While Jason and his younger brother Kaden are only one grade level apart, the standardized test scores will drastically differ among the two grade levels, specifically in reading and writing. This type of discrepancy can only be attributed to the fact that the current fifth grade class sizes were maintained while the current fourth grade class sizes were not. There's no question that we have amazing teachers at Bayview Elementary, supported by a dedicated principal, but no matter how amazing and dedicated they are, there's still only a limited amount of time in a day to give the necessary small-group and individualized face time to our children that they need in order to be successful, while at the same time monitoring, monitoring, and addressing the behavioral and social issues that undoubtedly occur. Together, we cannot allow the gaps to increase any further, which will ultimately instill a sense of fear and hatred of education into our children's lives. We cannot refer to ourselves as a data-driven district, yet ignore when the data is indicating a major problem. We need to put the needs of our children first, above any budgetary constraints, and ensure that our wonderful Bayview teachers do not reach the point of burnout, which will undoubtedly occur. During our conversation with Jace a few months ago, you instilled a sense of power in him by asking him what suggestions he has for our district. Being the wonderful, caring, brave brother that he is, he would request that you afford his brother and sister, as well as all of the other Bayview students, the same education and feelings of success that he's been gifted with throughout his years of Bayview. Furthermore, he would hope that you will afford him the same success as he enters Bay Shore next year, instead of allowing him to drown in a class of 30. In order to accomplish this goal, the current student-to-teacher ratio needs to be addressed. Thank you for your time and your description, I just...
Thank you. I just want to say that the administration and the board 100% agree with you all, and these are discussions that we've been having during the strategic planning process, none of us is happy with the high class size, all of us agree with that data. I would ask you to please come and get involved in the strategic planning process, you'll see that we are addressing this as, it's a top issue right now that's come out of the strategic planning survey online, it's one of the top issues that's come out of forms one and two, form 3A, we'll be discussing it in form 3B. A lot of what we discuss is based on exactly what you guys are saying, so we're in agreement with you.
If I can address it also, so I'm a teacher, and I'm going through something very similar, I'm in a K to 8 district, not, I'm not a Middletown, and we two were hit with the crushing budget cuts from the S2 bill, and the way that our superintendent handled it is that going, we always had about 100 or so students per grade, or 110, instead of having five classes per grade, they eliminated and collapsed some, and now we have four per grade, so we have significantly higher classes, and as a teacher, it's not easy. I have to be, you know, I have to have 100 eyes, I feel, to make my way, and it's not, it's definitely far from ideal, so that's why we're here, because we're going through this process, because we want to fix the problem. A couple of years ago, we didn't have the S2 bill hurting our school district. A couple of years ago, we were able to have smaller class sizes at Thompson, which is very overcrowded, we hired a fourth guidance council, we were able to, to sort of put Band-Aids on our imbalanced enrollment. But now with S2, you know, really tough choices had to be made, but through the strategic planning process, and we're taking it slowly, we want to do it right, we want to fix it so that we could even out and, you know, balance the enrollment across the district, so we can get back to more functional class sizes that are better for students and better for teachers. So that's really what we are trying to do, and we all do agree with you, it's far from ideal, and it's something that I experience firsthand every day, so, you know...
Four of us are teachers too, so we, we completely know the struggle, and we're, we do know that you're aware of this.
And in December, it's no picnic, so...
No, no, we totally get it, and our, I'm from Keansburg, so our district was massively hit, so I totally understand, we just...
Right, but we're working on it, this is what we're trying to fix.
We're just worried for our kindergartners especially, who obviously, if this takes years to correct, they're going to fall through the cracks.
Right, so that's why, you know, we're taking, when I say we're taking it slowly, we're not rushing into any kind of quick decision, we're listening to public input, and then we'll consult with experts, experts, whether it's demographics or traffic audit, but, you know, to see the best way to bounce out the enrollment across the district, but it's not just a Bayview problem, it's a Middletown issue right now, and it's also, you know, 300 other school districts that were hit by S2.
And I don't know if you heard Mrs. Gallagher, we're going out for referendum, going out for, we're passing the resolution next meeting to have Oprah, to Oprah, this states records, and that's part of the process as well, is joining those other districts that are fighting, who have lost money with S2. It's the number one thing we're working on right now, so I appreciate you guys coming, and like I said, please engage in the strategic plan, because we really want to come to a solution together as a community. Is there anybody else that wanted to speak tonight?
I would like to make a comment, being that you guys did. At the strategic plan, the public got up and they talked about class size, and they talked about, they can't wait till we get done with the strategic plan in 2021, so are we going to look in the budget to address these issues for next year until we come up with a strategic plan? Because I think what these women are saying, and I know what they're saying, is that we can't, yeah, we can't keep waiting because we're losing, the kids are losing, so is there something that we're going to be looking at in our budget to address this? Where Robin used the word Band-Aids on things, we might have to put a few more Band-Aids to address the class size, so that our kids don't lose out until we come up with a strategic plan? Because we're talking two years away, you know how much kids could lose in two years?
100% agree. It's too late. I just, from going to a bunch of meetings and talking about the strategic planning, I don't know where that money would come from, you know, there's no magic pot of money anywhere.
If I could quickly, ma'am, I would say, I really encourage you to look at the video on the website from the 3A. Did you say you're a teacher in Keansburg?
I am, sir.
And Keansburg is a Title I district, as you know. There's some really important assessment data that's shared about our Title I schools and the performance on the Title I schools, which really supports your argument and what you're saying, but I think it's important for you to review that and see that information before our next forum, number one. Number two, I think that's also why we, as an administrative team, set up our schedule so that we have a combination of the strategic planning forum and the budget to give people realistic expectations. There's really important data that we share in Form 3A, and the public said that they looked really hard at that data, and they didn't, you know, they wanted to have an opportunity to be heard, and we did hear them for over an hour, we heard them speak, and hearing their perspective is important, but also the data that we have up there on the perception of what is our neighborhood schools, and the performance of our Title I schools, as well as all the other information we share, they're done, it's put up there, a lot of data for a couple of reasons. It addresses the survey, and the questions, and the main indicators that were brought up by the public in the survey process, almost 3,000 surveys and nearly 10,000 comments, but it clearly shows what our issues are moving forward. And student performance, particularly in our Title I schools, is, you have every right to be concerned, and we are concerned too, and we want to work with you. I think it was well said by the board president, that we really do want to, we really do want to make sure that we address the class size issue. It's a problem that we see and we understand, but at the same time, as pointed out multiple times by many members of the board, we're going to have to do things differently if we're going to be able to work efficiently and maximize our programs and services for all of our students. So thank you, and stay in the conversation. By the way, that was really well-written and really well-thought-out. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, if there's nobody else who wants to come speak up, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?